Okay, we will call to order the city of Twin Oaks, Board of Alderman meeting, March the fifth, twenty twenty five. We stand up and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands our nation.
Thank you.
To the Constitution. One more please.
Alderman, I have a power here.
Call card.
Alderman, Bruce.
Here.
If it's Army.
Alderman, what more?
There, if I'm upon a pole.
Bear portrait.
It is, that's just me, that's just what I'm trying to say. Okay, we're gonna make an amendment to the agenda under Old Business, we're going to talk about driveway press. The under section H. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
That it, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, citizen comments at this time? No comments? Set the agenda of regular reading minutes from February nineteenth, and build list from February fifteenth to February twenty eighth. Discussion on the, um, they, motion to approve the set agenda. Will you, that, fifty second, yes, on favor?
Aye.
Voice, send agenda is approved, please report, newly arrived Officer Fager.
Alright, last month we had twenty radio calls, hundred forty-nine self-initiated, generated fourteen or four twenty-three traffic stops. Uh, made arrests for bat check, one for shoplifting, and three water arrests. We had seven auto crashes, family had one forty-one dicked in, they'd been in Merriman Station. Uh, we did have one down on Crest and Bridge. And we had, uh, four reports for criminal activities, shoplifting where it stucks, and I didn't do that, passing that check. And property damage also stucks, and I had four hours on the bike.
Three hours on the bike today?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't make any on the bike today. You'd better be better off taking care of the streets in the park.
He was on the, through the.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Any questions, Joe?
No, uh, no, none at this time.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Hey, uh, Old Business, driveway press, I assume you came to tell us something?
No, actually I don't, I'm, uh, working up, I'm waiting for it. That's the amount that I thought that I would have, but. My, the judge, it's not the head of the company, so, okay? And I will have the three estimates.
Okay, um, just because you're here, we didn't add this to the agenda. I felt it, or, or needed to firmly discuss really what our position is on the beating way forward. And we're opening up where we want to do that in open session. Uh, really haven't had a chance to have the group really discuss this amongst ourselves, so, uh, that was the reason for adding this to the agenda. Uh, we have, just to bring the board up to date, uh, where we are, uh, after our last meeting, uh, we briefly met and, uh, we consulted our attorney, we consulted the engineering group, we consulted the contractor, everybody involved. Uh, taking into consider, consideration ADA, and stormwater flow, everything else, and, uh, it was my opinion. I'm not expressing the opinion of the board, I'm just putting my opinion forward, that, uh, we have done everything, uh, that we should do through the book. And that we weren't really liable, because you can't get your trailer in the driveway. Uh, that being said, uh, we also felt that, uh, as a goodwill gesture, that we would offer up some, some of the money to help you alleviate the issue which we did go forward to. And I think initially you rejected it, but you did come back and say, well, I don't want to totally reject it at this point. So at any rate, that's where we are with the board. And I wanted to put this before the board so that we can decide what our position is going to be going forward, that was strictly my position. Sorry? Came back with that. We, we offered a sum of money which I, I won't disclose in the open session. We offered a nominal sum of money, uh, for the inconvenience where it's coming out to do some, uh, additional work with the driveway. And initially you rejected that, said, no, I want it for right, whatever it was. And then after a while, uh, he, he did come back and say, well, I don't want to figure a flat though, I still want to consider this.
May I provide some dollars to this? So, when that amount was presented to me, the only figures that I had was what was provided by, uh, Fisher. So, that does not seem to be very accurate, so we have two estimates that I have seen. So, just going off of that first, and further in that conversation, I've had with Mr. Millman, uh, three estimates to be provided, which is what I pursued of. Fortunately, estimated with Harvey Wagner, it's a little right now. I, that's, that's where I had this.
So, are, are we correct in thinking that you have not flatly denied our offer?
Well, I was under the impression that three estimates would have to be provided.
For the board to consider, not necessarily that they would approve any of the three, but just in order to present a different figure than what we offered initially. You would have to get three estimates, then for the board to.
That's right, and, and once that gentleman can, can get the rest of them and show it, and so, that's what.
And the board, the board may very well want you to go ahead and go through estimates. My position being, three estimates didn't really mean anything, because I personally didn't feel that we created the problem, okay? So, that's why we're going to discuss this, because it's not up.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, what I'm sure you say was, we've spoken with the attorney, we've spoken with the, um, I say, well, do you mean whoever that, not you, DA?
Yeah.
Thank you. In the letters, um, and then we offered an amount, I would have a difficult time having a discussion tonight. I don't know what we talked about, I don't know what we talked about with them, and I don't know what amount we're calling it. So, I don't think we can discuss this, if, if we're going to keep that in close session. You know, like if we're going to keep that number private, I don't have enough information out of the direction.
That's not immediate.
Okay.
And I assume then the attorney who knows what he said, and you guys suppose what they said, okay?
So, April you want?
Oh yeah, we offered five thousand dollars, um, which was, um, what we could offer under Mayor's authorization. And using the, um, quantity amounts that Harvey Wagner in fact provided in the initial bid. We thought that would cover most, if not all, of the corrective action. The BFA bid specifically was so high because it included a significant amount of engineering, because we are a city, obviously, we have to do a lot more due diligence than a homeowner would have to do, in terms of shooting the grades and having them out and check all of that. Whereas he could get it in much more portably himself, and it would be to his specification, because the use in this case is so narrow. So, you know, ninety-nine percent of other homeowners, it's not be an issue, but because of this specific trailer, it's a very narrow use case. So, we felt like it would be better for him to get the driveway put into his specifications rather than involve the city, which, you know, doubles and triples the cost. So in a lot of ways, we have to know how many need, so that is how we arrived at that, okay?
And whenever I, when we first spoke on fire.
Right, you already had, we had the original clause.
Why you want to go through the work description?
Yeah, I mean, what we talked about was just, uh, well, first of all, I agree with their methodology about the, you know, about cutting out all the other. Because his amount would be so much less, yeah, what we, so I agree with that methodology, and so, and arriving at that number, it made sense to me, and then I was just saying, yeah, I don't think that on the city's point of view, you know, when we negotiated that driveway, you know, the plans were there, it was, you know, we laid it all out there. We had no idea that kind of specific trailer issue or whatever, so we negotiated, I know that it came up in conversations with Harvey Wagner and stuff later, but not with our, the, all those samples. Well, we did, we negotiated, if they, you know, move trees or save trees or take a tree, or whatever, all of which goes, you know, to to basically compensate the homeowner for, we worked it, what was, what was left, but we did our work. This is the initiative, God, so, you know, I thought we did everything the way we were supposed to do it, so, from the legal side, it's like, yeah, but can't we offer some more to try to help?
Should. So, there was no, looking at the schematics that were provided prior to, they were all preliminary, not. There was really no way to see what the grade was going to be, there was no way of going, but that had either listed, schematics, electronics, that was all still the file to do large. But you know, the scan copy, I don't know, but there was no way to see what that grade changed. What's, what was the remedy for the, for bids issue, to, to achieve? Well, we had two, when I went over, then I just proceeded, I wasn't even, uh, laying them out until I see the third, that's whatever. I do know that me, me and Harvey Wagner on side, they did it though, they would be able to meet the minimum grade. Especially the maximum grade, where they would have to go up and just pay them, all that I have, I'm not trying to give the grade back to what it was, that would be going up to two and a half, or maybe, if it's something. I know, I know that a couple of contractors that had over, who, they were there, that expressed concern on being able to the box there, I was just driving. So I had one more, I had a photo, so, Jimmy's speak over. English, it was concerned about being able to back it. Wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, I just, I knew that there were conversations at the last meeting, I wasn't here. In case this came up.
Well, I hope, I hope that you understand why you're being so careful.
Yes, sir.
Because there's a lot of driveways in Twin Oaks.
Yes.
Believe me, there's a lot of driveways that you can't get your trailer. And we are spending public money for private property, which we have to be very careful to do that.
And the reason that I first said, no, because then we all, all, the, the estimate from the firm, there was no way that I could get this one, hey? So I had to get some real figures, unfortunately, the third one, so, out firing two things that are outside of my, is someone.
So, I'll ask a question, uh, Joe, by the way, did you have anything?
Uh, I, I, I do have a couple of things, but I guess I'd like to hear the question first.
Oh, the question I was going to ask the board is, do we want to get three bids in here, take a look at, is that part of the process?
I think we need to, yeah.
Okay, um, get those in here, and, uh, kind of table a discussion like this, but I think it's good, at least at this point, that we know where we all stand. Uh, on, on the issue, but, uh, we'll, we'll get the three bids in, take a look at that, then, uh, we need to make a decision. I know you need to say.
Yeah, they're awful weird.
Not reasonable. Joe, you okay with that?
Yeah, uh, I, I would, I would only ask, um, if, if, if it would make sense if the contractors can break out the bid on what the, what the demo is for what was installed. Because, from my point of view, uh, and, and Matt had expressed in front of me, uh, when we were talking about the slope of the grass, he had expressed, please don't pour that, that pad until we talk about this, um, I don't know that it would have cost the city any significant money to drop that grade, had the homeowner taken on the two extra pads. But if there's a cost now to come back later and, and tear out something that was already installed, is that the homeowner's responsibility? Uh, or, or do we provide help there? I, I just, I just want to make sure that the help that we're providing is, is adequate for that situation. Because had it been done originally, I don't know that it would cost what it's costing now.
It s- it sounds like to me that started out as correcting the slope. And it's now thrown into having to do multiple sections of the driveway. We're getting pushed. So, I think we're being asked to do more than correct the slope.
Not to do multiple sections, that's what they told. Yeah, they said, yeah, you have to get at least one, maybe two, to get to a grade. So, that, that has never, I hear you say, yo, just correct me if I'm wrong, and incorrect me if I'm wrong. At the time, you're getting ready to pour the sidewalk first slap. You were like, can we hang up a minute and see? That's what I hear you saying, so what I hear Joe asking is, if we had contrived with what he had said at the time, he wouldn't have figured this out. Just to clarify too, that was a conversation between you and the contractor, city with time followers. Plus. Well, I mean, it was like a, can we do this? I don't know, maybe it was, there was no, like, request to stop at that point, because we never, I mean, they were, they were moving, and we're already behind schedule. I guess what I'm saying is that if that was a concern, that should have brought well, fully even got to the point of even getting close to bringing your driveway, like even during the ORP, like all. You know, you, you knew that you had this trailer that was going to be a problem, potentially with the slope. We knew, we knew it was always going to be a steeper slope, I was very clear about that, even the previous owner, before you got it. Um, that it was always going to create a steeper slope there, in, 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 in your light sidewalk. So I guess at that time would have been the appropriate time to bring up your specific trailer that might cause any issues that are waiting until. The job was already in progress.
Although, point of clarification. When BFA said, in order to get slope, that we need, they have to do all this additional work. Is that what the original slope was, or are we trying to make it better than what's original?
No, we didn't even get to the original slope, it still doesn't get to.
The value of it, there was.
We had this said.
Yeah, I, I had to ask.
So you couldn't have gotten your trailer in the old slope?
We did, in fact, my wife had.
See, that's what I don't understand, the old slope it worked, new slope it doesn't, right? But yet, should be very close to what the old slope.
Well, what, what BFA showed us was that it's almost full, full degree different, that's not close to a slope.
Yeah, the, the originals, the, the, the original slope started at the, at the curb line. Now we have a flat sidewalk, and now that slope starts there to get back to that same high point.
I, I just, I don't understand why, how we, why we can't get back to the original slope on that, without doing all that stuff, but, that's what BFA's.
Because you have to have a less than two percent grade on any sidewalks, we need to be, Brian, so it has to be flat. This, yeah, right, so it's, they always knew that it was going to be a steeper slope, they tried to, you know, with the, it was a balancing act between the amount of easements needed and the negotiation of the easements, which we had to negotiate with the homeowners and the payments for the easements. So it was a balancing act, as all, you know, designs like this are, the minimal amount of easement and still giving them a workable driveway. But at that time, not knowing that there was this trailer that they had to work in, they were still giving you a workable driveway, like I said, this is a very narrow use case. And for most people, this driveway would be fine, for cars, for everybody else, driveway looks fine, it's great, it's no issue, so. Not knowing that, they didn't have that information when they designed the driveway.
Right, but even going back to November the twelfth, uh, I'd spoken to Roger Watson, Harvey Wagner, at the site, Roger, at the time. And even the week before, they didn't know if they were going to have to go up into the next hand or not. I asked him at that time, I said, be as assertive as you can, but, I need to, I, I don't know, because the preliminary plans did not show, it was crazy, there was no way for us to know, you know, until I saw the white chat coming up, very steep, like, this isn't going to work. And I, I'm not, I don't think it's a ninety percent, ninety-nine percent, there is a, there is a, there is a twenty percent grade in the front. And it, it, the schematic with our, the BFA supply that shows an average in the middle, that is not at all the problem. It's on the west, western side, and getting any low profile vehicle or trailer, one ought to be into that, like the previous owner had, I don't have them yet. Ideally, one day I would, I'd use a truck, I'd have a, seven foot trailer, or seven foot box truck. With that overhang, sixteen inches of clearance will clear, one fifteen inches or nine foot overhang will not go into that problem. And if anybody implies that, let's say, Lewis County is going to buy a little back garage. And had I, had we been able to slip at the schematics prior to seeing that, there is no way to look at the schematics that were there. I don't know if the, if the construction prints show that, what the preliminary prints did not show, what that grade would be going to be. And I can bring those next time. Sure that there are more than six, it's that, but.
If we talk to Wagner. Don't they ensure any responsibility here?
No, because they put it in for plan, so there is no possibility. BFA designed it the way we asked them to design it, and it was installed for plan, because, like I said, we did not have this information at the time of design, that there was a specific trailer that we needed to work around. So, the plans were designed and the, and they were installed, so, oh, that, that's kind of where we're at, it's, um, sort of new information that came in prior to the design and planning process. Questions to the board, I guess, do we feel some responsibility for that late information and to try to help the homeowner correct that situation?
I think we've already expressed that you feel we have some responsibility. I'm not sure we are totally responsible for that, that's something that we, we need to look at the reports, and we'd see, what, what, what's the what's the size of this issue, and then we need to try to come to some resolution. Okay?
Definitely.
Alright, so if you can get those reports finished, give them to us.
I hope, yes.
Uh, so that, next meeting, we can take a look at all of that, so, okay? Alright, we'll move on to new business, resolution number twenty twenty-five oh five.
Resolution, twenty twenty-five, D F zero five, a resolution, Twin Oaks, we're all under proving and operating the air to execute and bring in for mandatory services. So, just for some background information, we are currently without cleaning services here at cleaning hall. Cleaning service was abruptly ended, not on our behalf, but, um, so we have been without cleaning services for the last month or so. Um, and in looking at getting bids from companies, um, didn't want to make financial sense for us to just outsource a company up here. So we looked at both having the comfort station cleaned and the, um, city hall cleaned, so if you guys saw the memo that I put into your drop box with the summary, and then the hours that staff had estimated to us that they were spending cleaning the comfort station, so those are the three bits that we got, um, they were all in drop box two for you to review. So, my recommendation is, uh, Building Stars, and I guess the discussion would be for you guys to have, um, about the frequency of cleaning at the park, you know, Russ had some thoughts about how he wanted to maybe try, um, frequency, and then we can always increase it if we want to, so, um, if you talk about your.
As far as the city hall is concerned, I think that one deeper cleaning every two weeks, fully sufficient, that's kind of what that asks, which, I guess that would divide that number to half.
No.
No.
So, all of the cleaning services, um, recommended that we do one time a week, so, um, instead of doing every other week. Um, because of the additional events that we have up here, um, it takes less time to clean if they did it once a week versus twice a week, twice a month. So they all recommended that we go that route, uh, be every other week. And then that would also save some time, um, you know, during events and things like that, that Paula is spending some time cleaning up after weekend events and things like that on off weeks. So, have a pretty up staff to focus more on our administrative program here, so.
So that two seventy-five was per month?
That is for the month, these are all for the month, so not per week, so, sorry if that was not clear, but yeah, that's monthly fee, for them to clean once per week, but the frequency, I guess, to discuss really at the park, so.
Yeah, if we said, okay, we only need you twice a month, so you probably, they still want to say.
Well, I, I didn't have them in it that way, because they all recommended that we do it once a month, so, I mean, I could go back and ask them for additional information, but at this point, we've been six weeks, seven weeks without cleaning, so we need to get somebody in here ASAP, so, since we, we got ghosted, so we're hoping that we're enough. Get somebody in here and get them going pretty quickly.
Yeah, as far as the park is concerned, this is just cleaning the restroom.
Correct.
Uh, we will, John and our staff will do the trash.
Trash, yes.
And they will, on a daily basis, at least, check the restroom, to make sure they're not filthy, dirty, somebody to come in. So, they would come in twice.
Yes, there's the different options, those are all monthly fees, and we want them to come to the park. Yes, there's the different options. Those are all monthly fees and we want them to come to the park twice a week. If we wanted to do the competition three times a week and then in the busy time, five times. So, and, and we could change that. We're all open to, you know, if it's summer and it's a busyer time and you want to move five times a week, you can do that. And later you can pull back and do twice a week. So, all of the bids are open to that.
But do we try to deal with our people every day? Just take them up at it every day?
Currently? Yeah, I think, uh, Isaiah is cleaning the bathrooms right now every day that he's here. So, um, and then I'm told sometimes they're doing it twice a day in the summertime. So, when it gets really bad. I don't have a lot of verification on. We haven't really been tracking any of that in terms of what they clean, how they clean. I, I, there's no, um, written information about that or frequency or issues that have, that have arisen in the past. So, this is all sort of anecdotal from the staff telling me what they, what they give.
Guess I would ask the question, why can't they just continue to clean your bathroom?
Well, the, I think it's cost prohibitive for us.
Yeah.
What do you mean, for the staff to do that?
Yeah.
Well, it's cost prohibitive for us to have a company just cleaning up here at the city hall. So the, these bids are what they are because they're gonna be part of things. And also, staff is spending what I consider a lot of time cleaning the bathrooms. So, sometimes up to twenty hours a week just cleaning the bathrooms. And we could really use some additional time for our maintenance. And so I, I personally think that our public work staff time is better spent doing some maintenance activity, getting catching up on some of the things that they haven't had time to do rather than cleaning restaurants.
So they're spending, uh, five to six hundred dollars a week at time cleaning.
And then the math.
Twenty hours, thirty bucks an hour?
Yeah.
This.
Typically, I say.
Do that two times a week would be sufficient to add frequency. Park is busier.
I really don't know. I, I don't feel like I have enough information to answer that. I think it's something to need to try, see how it goes. And then if we start getting complaints that the restrooms are filthy, we can always add the additional service. That's sort of my thought about it. It's try that twice a week frequency and see how it goes. If it gets really bad and people are, you know, expressing that the restrooms are not in good shape, then let's.
Yeah, I, I think our staff would want, I think it's worth it, wanting to take it out, take it up out of the sheet, take it up, right?
Make sure there's toilet tissue in there. Make sure the, all that, you know, wash all around.
Right.
And like shit.
Yeah.
And that would.
You have some law. Even, you know, like they do that. That has to be a, that's.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this. I mean, if, uh, if we can cut the amount of time that they're spending to half in the park, uh, what we were also paying additionally to get teams up here is probably a lot here. And if it allows them to do more maintenance things, part of that, you have that for the reserve. I would say, uh, Building Star and let's try the minimum two times a week enough for the YouTube. And make sure that they understand what might need to be extended. See how it goes.
Well, I find it interesting because, and I get like the city hall one is less expensive on the Building Star, but. And maybe they've just, they have to type this wrong for a week after on. Is the three times a week for Jan Pro at the park actually five ninety-five? Not three ninety-five.
Oh, and that's possible that I say.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I, I.
Now that I'm back and down.
How can the other, you're fine.
I thought it was a good deal too. I don't know. It's like, why would you do that?
Why not?
My, my.
I'm so into that.
Sure is. Because it's right in between those two numbers.
Yeah, they're putting nine.
I, because I was like, oh, we're gonna use plus this. You know, uh, what I had looked at was their five a week and it was slightly less expensive than.
Which one was that, Jan Pro?
The Jan Pro.
Uh, they came in at the very last minute, so that's probably why I was like, I'm not hurrying.
I think, and they kind of have a type running there, so that.
Yeah.
There's no way that it's less than the two or.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Right, yeah.
Which of course then.
My eye, of course, goes to the, uh, but they're five times a week is less expensive and they're one time a week at City Hall.
Yeah, that's expensive.
Four.
That at the park?
Oh, that was City Hall. So Jan Pro, you have three oh one for City Hall and then two times a week at four twenty, three times a week at, oh, what's the part?
Bring up their bid because now they're like, they didn't see in there. I didn't go. I. Yeah, what did I? Three oh one, four twenty. That's one day a week. Okay, this is their, yeah, seven eighty-five, four ninety-five, four twenty. So I did.
Yeah, but you still technically wrong with four ninety-five. So I would still say this.
Right, yeah. So, two days a week and three days a week. It's either four twenty for two days or four ninety-five for three days.
Right. So do you see that the math on that is if you go with Jan Pro at three, you get them three times a week?
Yeah.
And you're still paying less.
Yeah.
Than the other people at two, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I, I'd be going that direction with my board.
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Because they're so much lower on the park.
The number.
Three days a week.
Yeah, and I looked at their five a week.
Yeah, I know there will be a time of year that we have to use that.
Yeah.
And they were less expensive on that by a decent amount. Anybody else, you know, sixty, whatever.
Or look at them charting.
Uh, yeah, sorry. There, okay.
But ten minutes.
Yeah, it was four ninety-five.
That is the same.
That's all.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So.
But I'm just saying that like.
I mean, honestly, it's more expensive.
It's not more expensive enough.
Sure.
To get, when you get extra day of ease with that much left, you add those two numbers together versus those two numbers together, for even those.
Sure.
Yep, it makes more sense to go that direction.
Yeah, and that's fine. All three of them, you know, when I looked through the bids and the supplemental information, they all were very, very similar in terms of service and their guarantees and all the things that they're gonna clean. Yeah, exactly. So. I literally only chose Building Star because they were the cheapest on the hall. I had it. Only open to whichever one you guys prefer.
And I was just going on the number that way.
Yeah.
It's a good point. Well, because I, I feel like, and I don't know, we haven't had it, right? We're not gonna do. But I have no doubt that at least in the summer, summertime.
Yeah.
Right, so figure at least four months a year.
Right.
Or maybe five a week. And if eight fifty is five times a week for them, and seven eighty-five is five times a week for them, I'm already winning.
Yeah.
Going down here.
It's true.
So that's what I was looking at was like, uh, on the times when we have to go to the most, who's less expensive there? Is that actually what matters?
Yeah.
In the long run, then it'll be such a higher, you know, if I take that, I think I did the math of like the eight fifty times. You know, if I did five times a week all year, I'd be paying forty-five dollars a dollar.
Yeah.
Right. Like, that's a whole person. So.
Eight fifty a month?
It's eight fifty a month.
Okay.
Nine eighty-five a month.
Five times a week.
Nine eighty-five a month.
That's what.
That's what.
I'm gonna check my ass, okay?
Okay.
Time. So, Jan Pro is four ninety-five.
Four ninety-five or three times a week. So it's four, that's three ninety-five.
There are only, uh, twenty-six dollars more for the city hall.
Right, right. So that is probably overall, like Lisa pointed out, overall, they're the less expensive.
Yeah, and more comfortable. And the two times a week in winter.
Yeah.
Easy.
Yeah.
Right, like, yeah, for sure. But we're going into spring right now and I can tell you, Mike is down there every other day.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, this is the time of year when three times a week is gonna get us, but I think more, more what we're used to.
Hmm.
Um, and then in summer, summer, we're gonna need five. And, yeah, maybe all winter, all we need is two.
Yeah.
You know, we get into November, December, we're about to, so.
So you were thinking of Jan Pro.
That would be my recommendation. Not that I don't think any of that, any of that.
Well, I'm in the same boat. Well, we got, we got each Jan Pro in the past. There's a bonus there because they were the ones who did our cleaning during COVID. You remember when we had to have all the.
Yeah.
And, you know, pretty late round and stuff. That was who did that too. Okay. Which, I'm calling them because I knew that they need work.
I don't think we should try to keep out.
Right.
Heritage. It's done, you know?
Yeah.
We don't.
No, I agree with that.
It's done.
Right.
No, agreed. I think that that's probably why they're.
They, yeah, yeah.
Which, they did. It was the Enviro, oh, the Enviro Shield or something that they did during.
Okay.
Be a bad idea. See what was possible to see.
Okay. Yeah.
Just because it was during COVID, you know, maybe it shouldn't be.
Right.
He said that they were.
Why they're less expensive.
Yeah.
Is that they're already familiar with what all.
You know, if anyone else is just sort of going on it, you go for your square footage, you go, dang it, this is what I said.
Yeah.
Over still.
Well, we had them all come out.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They came out major, he sent them to the.
Uh, yeah.
And I'm sure we could add on whatever additional service. Yeah, he did mention that they were doing more Enviro Shield again because of the flu and all that stuff.
So, the resolution was to, uh, authorize me to execute agreement with Jan Pro. And also get additional information on regards to sanitize the, like. On the resolution itself. By line three. As the word services. Jan Totin. Section one line three.
Well, I see the janitorial as set forth.
Service.
Uh, I got it. Yes. We can do that. But that's anyway.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the amended resolution?
I would make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Uh, sure. And so, uh, I guess I've been tied up there on the breath. It's all favorable.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five.
Well, I will call him tomorrow. Between, I have to go first, so we'll try and respond.
Bill number twenty-five dash one three.
Okay.
On the assist.
Okay. Yeah. You know, I'm.
We're staying. What?
Okay. And, you know, my wife knows him.
They're the same policy.
You know, she was on, um, based on proof for, for quite some time.
Finally separate.
Uh, she gave.
Uh, aren't they going more from that? It says purchasing and procured, or that's used together there. So thank you. You're in the things you give it up. That's why it's there. I know, but there's really nowhere else to put it. Regime. An ordinance amending the Twin Oaks Purchasing Code, page chapter forty-five, when I experience a code as a treatise to selecting positive banks in condition of city property.
Do you have a call? We're doing it. You want me?
Yeah.
Sure, um, so.
Before I have to be one that will win.
Here, the state.
We are the.
Uh, all those old arcane ways, uh, fourth classes.
Three years of all the truck, for the three years of all the truck.
Really. The depository.
Yeah.
And the state, the contrapositaries and the depository thing. Used to say happy end. You're saying you actually located there. They got rid of all that stuff and said, yeah, they're allowed.
They're calling him down here.
And they got rid of that. Now they say, it's gonna go out.
To immediately ask us to give them.
Now adopted, um, of what we had to do.
As all, as our.
Um.
Like, that's what his conversation without.
Depository because that's a mistake and all of that.
Exactly.
And then with the servile property thing, it was just something like that. We talked about the fact that.
You know, may, maybe, maybe next year, you can go do a little bit of English work on it. You know, obviously we did that with the not on.
I did find one that I think that.
Yeah, I mean, we just started over there too. First contract long or anything. That was all.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right. I don't think he's right. So there's no point.
What it does, basically does.
Yes.
Real estate, if you need to do this, if it's.
Yeah.
Other.
Yeah. Always.
Bit or a rock, I mean. Things like that.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, I'm sure.
Dump it out and, uh.
Yeah, if you're ready to. Cause I was telling you.
Yourself. Or abandoned numbers at a reduced price.
You need that.
Was it real, dressy though, or?
All, all these things that, that say hyphen, it's all not certified.
There's many ways that you.
So I won't be, I, I won't. So.
Neither was way, so bye.
So I recommend the. I need further discussion. Either side.
An ordinance amending the Twin Oaks Purchasing Code, page chapter one forty-five, with the code as a treatise to selecting positive banks and condition of city property. Go through bill number twenty-five dash.
Second.
I don't know.
Roll.
There are two jobs.
Over.
So.
Alderman three seven.
If you wanna talk.
Yes.
So, Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman one.
Yes. Bill twenty-five dash four three becomes pardons. Twenty-five dash three, by now. Resolution twenty-two five oh six.
Resolution of the Twin Oaks Board of Aldermen approving an agreement with the Davy Tree Expert Company for the treatment of trees that the intersection on highway one forty-one in Big Ben Road. This is just a continuation of the service that they do at rest every year. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, treatment for the trees of the intersection.
But this is an important service. We got very good results. It saves. The check, they did that first nothing here. Their motion to adopt resolution twenty-five oh six. Motion to adopt resolution twenty-five oh six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Favor.
But I.
Aye.
I would. Will adopt.
You're, you're already.
I would say, wait, now. Resolution twenty-five dash one seven.
A resolution of the Twin Oaks Board of Aldermen approving an agreement with the Davy Tree Expert Company for fertilizer and municipal treatment in Twin Oaks Park. And just a continuation of the contract that we had of in the past to fertilize and municipal. To group resolution number twenty-five oh seven.
I mean, there.
Second.
No, no. All favor?
Aye.
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 Will adopt resolution twenty-three five oh seven, by now. Are any discussions made on this? Pretty three four, and report today.
Okay, so a couple of administrative updates. Um, we have second interviews from the public work supervisor this week, so that's great. We have two really great candidates, I think, that we will, um, talk to again, so that's gonna be, uh, good, get somebody going. Uh, new cleaning service will start ASAP. Thank you very much for that. Um, we are looking at standardizing the committee appointments to May for every committee so that we used to do a kind of hit miss all over the place. So we're going to make sure that every committee, including Board of Adjustment, is the, everybody needs to make. So we'll have new committee members appointed in May and also vote for new chairman of each committee in May, which we have not been doing consistently. So, um.
Board of Adjustment has to have a new.
Right, exactly. So we will, even if they, even if they have nothing to discuss, we're gonna have a quick meeting, maybe with Board of Adjustment to, if we have new members being installed and then, so we do have a few people that are up and I think we're going to do the same thing that we did last time, which is put out a call so that instead of just re-upping everybody every time, trying to get, make some new people involved. So we're gonna put out a call for committee members and maybe in a new application. Russ can review those and make recommendations to the board. So that'll happen in May. And then the other thing that I wanted to let you guys know about is the beach, I'm talking to the Painting Lake group that beats up here every Friday. And they would like to have a art exhibition up here. So I was just at Chesterfield City Hall today. So I was just at Chesterfield City Hall today, and they have a local art exhibition at their city hall, so I was examining all of their, uh. Hanging equipment that they have, so, uh, we're gonna do that in May, so I'm gonna put out a call for artists, so if local artists that live near Twin Oaks or within. A certain small radius. We're gonna have, it's just gonna be kind of open to everybody, mixed media, um. It'll, I'll, it'll have some guidelines around it in terms of like, it'll have to be framed, it'll look professional, that sort of thing, but they're very excited about it, they want to work on some new works to showcase up here, and then I think you probably have some other. Artists, photographers among us as residents that would like to, well, even kids could do it if they want to, so. We will have an opening the first Friday in May, and I think looks like a good day on the calendar, so we get to May second, but forward come about that.
So.
Um, I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Um, so. And I think it might, who knows, could be misunderstanding, but.
Yeah.
So are we having our appointments to the committees in May or their internal appointment of their members?
So.
Well, it'll be like, if there's.
My suggestion would be that you do the one in April, otherwise you have a brand new potential one-year mayor. That just is literally getting put in a seat, I, I mean, most people do it in April as they wait, and then May is the first meeting and they always have meetings, that's, I love that idea, I.
Okay.
Because you give, otherwise.
Well, yeah, who would make the appointments before then, I guess the first, the meeting wouldn't.
Right, yeah.
They are, they would do their internal, but it's, the appointments generally come at people, so that they have time of.
Yeah. Yes, I think that's what I read.
That's what I kind of.
So that the new committee would be.
Be in May.
And then.
Yeah.
The point of new.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell, so I just let me say like, it could, yes, it might be crazy if you try to do.
That is more clear, you're right.
So, yes, so it will be making recommendations to the board in April and then they will have their.
That would also give their. Cancel.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if they wanted to, but it also.
In April, like, I didn't do, there were ever.
No, they don't take it till.
They don't think.
Right, that, you would sort of go.
It would be the outgoing mayor.
Right, they would, otherwise you're gonna delay.
Like, that's.
That's true.
That's why people do it in April, is that.
Otherwise, people get delayed, and you won't have those committees set until June or July.
Yeah.
They, they don't know the people, they don't know what, I mean, right, we're talking about Mayor City, you have a lot of.
Yeah.
So I was saying, most people do that.
I see it.
Okay.
Definitely easier for us to track in terms of when people are expiring, we had people expiring months all over the place, and it was like.
Yeah, it could be to have some of their own things, yeah.
But.
Track them, yeah.
I think that's.
From that is a hope.
No, you're right, that makes sense. So, um, for the public works updates, we've been doing, uh, the, just a list of the staff assignments, we did finally, hopefully Joe can hear this. We did finally get those pickets fixed on the bridge that have been broken for however long, but over a year or something when you brought them up, so. John fixed those this week, which is great, so they're working on inventory, um, we did get, you can get a lot of complaints about hot holders, everyone is, so. John has been trying to get as many of those buildings. Hot holders. Um, I'm waiting to hear back from the church, but I did do a lot more deep dive research on the fence situation and. Um, to find out that fence is indeed on church property, so I found boundary lines that BFA had done for us, and I went out there with a tape maker myself and measured from the. Homeowner's property lines to the fence, and it is thirty to thirty-five feet in both places, so we only have fifteen feet of boundary line, so it's fully on the church property. They, they're not aware of that yet, but we will make them aware of that. And then kind of same, no updates on the Crescent, uh. Projects, they're still supposed to be done by April first, so we'll see, I learned a lot of good, I did go to my first day of construction oversight class today, which I learned a lot. So it's been really eye-opening, it's been all day there with the public works people from all over the St. Louis area, and it was, it was great, I really, I learned a lot. Um.
They didn't talk about driveway trades, did they?
No, not specifically, um, but we did talk a lot about, um, you know, responsibilities of construction oversight, which. I will be doing the bowl the entrance very differently than I did Crescent, now that I know the things that I have, so. Anyway, I think it's a good, a really, it was a good investment for us to spend that two hundred dollars for me to get that class, it's really a learning class. Um, and then, yeah, bowl the entrance, uh, we've gotten all the bid, the documents back from the contractors, I'm just awaiting pre-construction meeting on that, get that lined up. And then I've had, uh, one good meeting with the new project manager for the lighting project, so he's working on getting me settled and letting me know when to start, so. Anybody have any questions?
Coffee.
Coffee. Rosemary coffee? Yeah, rosemary coffee is open, that would be. For coffee.
Want to know how we're doing?
Coffee with the mayor? Okay, well, we haven't set a date for that, but Russ. Thought we should probably have a coffee with the mayor and maybe all the aldermen to come, uh, at some point, so maybe. Maybe we do it after the election, I don't, we haven't set a date for it yet, but potentially. Maybe if we, we will have a new alderperson, so. To do it after the election, to kind of be the. And I think, I hope we're gonna be happy to help, so.
That's a big problem.
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to pass now. What would be a good day, what would be a good time, because they are increasingly just.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think if we ask them, they'll be happy to help.
Right.
Yeah.
And maybe if we, if we make it, wait till May, it might even out.
Trying to get in there now, I mean, I've been in there.
Great, good call, it's happening, yeah.
Hey, uh, comments, the only comment I have is, uh, beating me old. Drum here. Uh, we picked him up tonight, giving a ride over here and the trash. Yard now made its way into the road. It's all over, you know. Uh, wondering.
Yeah. Man, how much can I, can I say whatever? Oh, okay, so we have a, we have a COVID violation.
Okay.
On auto leak drive, um, which has been ongoing for many months, homeowner has received, um, privacy letter from me. In December, early December, right name, we had follow-up emails with no avail, the, um, prosecuting attorney is now involved. So he has sent a letter, which has not, um, with the deadline for cleanup, that has not happened, so now we are on to formal citations and court proceedings. That is where we are.
It's a priority, you're correct. So not only, not only. We used to have trash containers sitting at the side of the house with trash laying next to it. And if you went on to his. It's, uh, people next to our, their property. Now the trash can's been dumped over. And the trash has been blown out with the winds, it's been blown out onto our.
We're living on with you, so we are at, we are at court citation and, um. Our prosecuting attorney tells me that he will be, um, issued a citation daily until it is.
Day.
Where we are.
So at, at any rate, at minimum, uh. You just might forget trash dump that's in the road.
Jan Pro.
Jan, right.
That daily line?
It is, yes.
Uh, so the. Time limit is coming on, yes.
Time limit has come on, was Tuesday of this week. Of the final drop dead. Time to go to citation.
That's when it got worse. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where we're at.
Good. I don't have a conference, Reese.
Uh, no, the only thing that I have, this is really, I didn't realize until our last meeting that I haven't really said that. Got, I think I really, who's diagnosed proxy cancer, he's had surgery, he's not a cancer anymore. And he has well on his fresh recovery now.
Good.
Um, so way longer than any of us thought, a week in the hospital, a little night, a little bed here, um, but he's doing great now.
Good.
Back at work all weekend, you know, and great, but I, I think he just sort of. Have to close to the vest for a while and then. I couldn't remember if I told him that, so.
Yeah.
I thought I would announce, when I said it to her, I was like, yeah, I'm off to be up in the hospital recovery.
Yeah, I was like, what?
I was like, oh, oops, anyway.
Well, good to hear.
Yeah, I think it's really clear.
Yeah, that's right. Final citizen comment.
I got a, I got a couple of comments here.
Yeah, Joe.
Yep.
Joe's out there.
I'm still here, I'm still here. Um, a couple of things, um. April, and I don't know who else has seen it, but, you know, I sent April a, a picture of the stop sign at Crescent Road and Crescent Avenue. Uh, because it got moved to the other side of, of the light, the light is now on the backside, it's difficult to see, and April, I, I totally understand what you're saying. Um, and the only reason I'm bringing this up now is, um. I've just observed an increase in blowing both the Golden Oak stop signs and that Crescent Road stop sign. And I would just ask, um, Officer Weiner, if you just keep a closer eye on that, uh, I, I'm, I'm seeing people at Golden Oak. Not even putting the brakes on, they're just blowing right through it. Um, and it just is, it seems to be increasing in number. The other comment that I had was. Uh, April on the sidewalk i- in front of my house towards Golden Oak. There's probably a half a dozen, maybe golf ball size pits that have developed in that sidewalk. And I don't know if RB Wagner needs to come out and patch those or what, but it's. I, I walked towards Crescent Road and didn't see any, but there's, there were several between my driveway and Golden Oak.
Yeah, for sure, I was mounting with the best self and well, added to the punch list.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Mm-hmm.
And just so, I don't, I'll share what I told you in the email about the stop sign too, um. In case, and maybe you're wondering too about the height of the stop sign, so that is, I didn't know if anybody got questions about it, but, so it was moved a few feet over, obviously to accommodate the. Sidewalk going through there, and then as a part of that, we are required to raise it to the county's height, all of the stop signs over there are kind of low and old and. So it is now seven feet up in the air, which is what the county specifications are when they're pestering five, so it's, nobody can like, get their head on it and walk through there. So that is why it is in a higher location if you grab a flare and wonder why, but all the stop signs, as they all are, are reflective, so if lights are shining on it, it should be. Pretty risky, so.